Good evening, everyone. We welcome all of you to our favorite meeting up here where we are going to honor our students and their accomplishments this evening, but before we start, we're going to have to ask you to stand up before Dr. Wilson. The fact of September 1st, 1991, chapter 9 of the laws of 1991 requires that we inform persons, other than students who attend meetings within the school, of the proper procedures to evacuate a building in an orderly and timely manner in the event of a fire emergency. If you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, please exit from here and use the door in the hallway. Walk quickly to the safety station opposite the main entrance of the building. Further instructions will be given at the safety stations. I'd like to compliment the senior Mrs. Norris and the staff on the excellent condition which we find in school. At this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Camming so she can kind of do her spiel and still allow you all to prepare.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So it is my great honor to be here tonight to celebrate our students. There is really no greater joy for a superintendent than to celebrate with all of our kids, whether their accomplishments are academic, or athletic, or civic, because as schools, that is what we hope our kids will be. We hope they exit after 12th grade as well-rounded, good citizens, more smart, more caring, and have really, really worked hard to do their best after 13 years of school. So we are really joyed to be here tonight to celebrate our kids. I am going to ask that you stay for the evening so that all of our kids have the audience that the kids in the beginning have, as well as the kids who are at the end. And at the end of the first part of our program, we're going to go to the cafeteria for refreshments to kind of revitalize and celebrate and schmooze just generally the cocktail, which is to sort of bask in the happiness and joy. And I'm going to ask for the board and the administrators to sit in the front so we can all enjoy the presentation. So we're going to start tonight with Mr. Moore, the principal of Baldwin High School.
Good evening, Dr. Camming, members of the Board of Education, Central Office Administrators, parents, administrators, parents, and honor students. Thank you so much for inviting me this evening. I'd like to introduce the winners of the script spelling bee at the Fife High School and at the middle school. From Brookside, Quasi Monsu. From Lenox, Quasi Monsu. When I call your name, will you like to go right up to the podium, please? So Quasi, if you can, I'd like to take a look at you. Thank you. Brandon Serfres from Lenox School. Aaron Ashby from Meadow School. Lisa Reed from Blotus School. Julian Cook from Steel School. And from the middle school, Justin Stewart. The certificates will be provided to all the students in school tomorrow. Congratulations, all of you. Go back to your seats. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Mrs. Susan Norris, the principal of Lenox School.
Good evening. I'm proud to be a part of this very special night. This evening, I would like to ask you to join me in celebrating the accomplishments of a very distinguished group of exemplary students. This is one of the most difficult challenges I face each year, as it is so very hard to condense all the achievements of this extreme, esteemed group into just one speech. When I introduce each of these amazing students, I welcome their families and friends to stand up also and be present. Ladies and gentlemen, you will now meet all of the high school's Class of 2016 Top 10 students. Will they all please come up and stand over here with me? Okay, beginning with the 10th-ranked student. Monique Joseph. Monique Joseph is an exceptionally young woman. She is kind, intelligent, motivated, conscientious, and diligent. She is a member of our medical academy, where she was able to gain valuable, authentic experience. Monique's academic focus is balanced out by her work-wide commitments. Her academic accolades are varied, and this extraordinary young woman proved that she has the potential to achieve amazing things. She is very talented in the performing arts, in both music and dance. Monique is involved in many extracurricular and co-curricular activities. She has participated in Mercy Medical, North Shore L.J., Winfer Hospital, and North Shore Shadow Days, where she was also able to visit a DNA transformation lab. Monique has also participated in the Cradle of Aviation Stem Convention. Monique is also a well-versed choral player. She has competed with the Science Olympiads, entered writing contests, and has been a four-year member of the Honors Ensemble that has performed solos at NISMA. And she was inducted into the Tri-A Honor Society. Monique participated in the Science Olympiad team and the key club, and she was involved in an intramural night where she performed both a lullaby and dance. She has been dancing since she was two years old, taking classes in every genre of the studio offering. Monique is a role model to our school and community, working on a great community and charitable endeavors. This inspirational model students share. I have been the medical academy since freshman year, and it has definitely contributed to my success. I've learned so much in my classes and gained so much experience by going on various field trips. It made me become more enthusiastic about pursuing a medical career. And Monique will be attending St. John's University. Congratulations. Our next student, Peter Orselli. Peter Orselli is a young man with a unique combination of interests and talents. His academic and personal achievement in the most challenging program of course available in a high school has distinguished and defined him as a highly intellectual, committed, and innovative student. Peter participated in the manning program, college-oriented honors and advanced placement courses, and will graduate with a Regent Diploma with distinction honors with mastery in math and science. Through his musical studies, he was invited to be a member of the Tri-A Music Society, which is nationally recognized and provides musicians with the opportunity to interact and perform together. Through his ongoing musical exploration, he has participated in so many performances, and his talents have duly been recognized. At the same time, Peter was excelling in such a challenging amount of subjects. He was deeply immersed in our highly professional theater, vocal, and music programs. He is a value alto and tenor sax player in a high school wind symphony. As role model to his peers, he serves as a vocal tenor section leader and as the treasurer of the concert choir and wind symphony. He is also a member of the vocal jazz group, which performs at the high school, as well as at numerous community events. Peter has participated in our theater program for the past three years, and he has had many leadership and lead roles. Peter is sensitive and caring. He knows the importance of giving back to the community. He works with the key club, sings in the senior center, library, and church, as well as volunteering for cancer research fundraising events. I would like to share a quote from this extraordinary student. He says, "The high school's been an excellent environment to work in and has helped his learning. It has its own charm that nowhere else has." Peter will be attending St. John's University. Congratulations. Student Lauren Johnson. Her outstanding achievements define her as an intelligent, artistic, athletic, responsible, caring young woman. An excellent student, Lauren has taken one of the most demanding academic programs offered at the high school. She has consistently put on the high honor roll with distinction every term of high school. When she graduates, she will receive Regent's Diploma with advanced designation and mastery in math and science. Lauren is an accomplished musician and athlete. She is a plaudits member of the Honor Symphony and the Marching Band. For her musicality, she was selected to be first chair of her section. She was also selected for membership into the Tri-A Music Honor Society for her commitment to music studies and community service projects. Additionally, she promotes school spirit as a member of our varsity cheerleading team, competing with squads across Neversville County and cheering at football and basketball games. And she also participated in intramural night and sports night. Lauren has organized fundraising events as an active member of the Class of 2016. Her extensive involvement in extracurricular activities demonstrates her school citizenship and exemplary character. She has been a member of the Girl Scouts of America since she was five years old, and she now holds the position of an ambassador, serving numerous service projects. Lauren's work with the key club allowed her many opportunities to give back to this community. She is a member of the Mission Committee for Real Aid for Life. This multifaceted young woman states that classes that Baldwin High School offers to help prepare students for whatever may be thrown at them. We are well-trained, both academically and in real work. Lauren will be attending Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education, City University of New York. Our seventh ranked student. Amelia is a highly motivated and determined young woman. A true academic, Amelia has achieved excellent grades in the most difficult honors and AP courses. Amelia's exemplary work ethic is reflected in her remarkable transfer. She is an AP scholar with distinction, and it has consistently been on her high honor roll. She is the flute section leader in the Baldwin High School Wind Symphony Ensemble. She has performed in many, many concerts and parades, has participated in the NISMA majors, and recently collaborated with an ensemble that recorded all of our commissioned pieces. Amelia manages to balance demanding academic program with an extensive extracurricular involvement. This is evidenced by her work with sports night and intramural night, as well as her varied activities with the key club and our music programs. She has worked on special projects and teams to provide robotic demonstrations, and she has taken this as workshops to elementary school students. And she has also participated in an industrial engineering spark challenge. It is no surprise that Amelia was awarded the Concerned Parents of Baldwin's Humanitarian Award. Her extensive community service endeavors truly reflect her citizenship and character. They include breast cancer walks, volunteering the chest-up festival, and numerous charitable endeavors. She serves on the Mission Committee for Real Aid for Life and is an active tenth angel to the Cancer Society. She is a peer tutor working with the Plaza Elementary Theater Program. Her concern for all fellow human beings was demonstrated when, as an ambassador girl scout, she participated in a teen conference for the 59th session of the Commission on the Status of Women in the United States for the United Nations. This remarkable young woman shared her thoughts on Baldwin High School. She said, "Baldwin Senior High School has shown me what it means to work hard, not only in academics, but in sports, clubs, and music, as well as putting 110% of yourself into everything you do. I will forever appreciate everything Baldwin has given to me." And we will appreciate it heavily. Amelia will be attending the Honors Program at Colin Paddle School of Global Leadership at City College of New York. Congratulations. She's very enthusiastic about the future, new discoveries, and seeing how this life, the lives of others, will change for the better as time progresses. In viewing this transcript, one can see he has excelled in the most rigorous courses, and that he has a passion for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. He challenges himself with the most arduous honors AP courses, including an independent study course of Lenox Clusters. His computer science and calculus teacher feels that he is top-notch in terms of brilliance, intuition, and creativity, often providing the most interesting solutions to problems. Safer is a student who is inspiring to all those around him. He takes every opportunity to challenge himself academically. He's listed accolades for being named an AP Scholar with honor and consistently ranked high honor roll with distinction. Safer is immersed in school life and activities. His annual pursuits are quite impressive. He's a captain of the robotic safety team, the vice president of the athletes, the treasurer of the academians, the vice president of the Science Olympiads. Additionally, he's an active participant of SED and Leadership Council. He also competes with Baldwin's March Leadership Team. Safer has still found time to perform community services, such as volunteering for the summer reading club, fundraising for our launches for the community, teaching technology to adults, and teaching children through the Money Smart for Teens program. He is also a member of the teen advisory group. He contributes his expertise to the high school community at large. He continually strives towards excellence. This extraordinary young man explains that teachers have taught him to overcome stress and become more confident. Friends have taught him to solve problems in numerous ways. Simply put, he said, "He had fun while learning and going to classes, and it did not seem like a chore." Safer will be attending New York University. Bridgette Jules. Bridgette Jules is defined by her outstanding achievements in the classroom, on the field, in the council hall, and throughout the community. Bridgette has soared through the most challenging courses Baldwin offers. She has chosen a program that included advanced placement and honors level classes in all subject areas. Bridgette is an AP scholar with distinction, currently taking an additional five AP classes. When she graduates, she will be awarded a Regent's Diploma with advanced designation honors and mastery in math and science. Bridgette is a musician who plays the trumpet in the Honor Symphony, where she was elected to the position of librarian. As a member of Jazz Band, Bridgette spends hours preparing for performances. Bridgette varsity soccer and varsity lacrosse coaches named her captain of both teams. She was named the female student in the district who best exemplified outstanding physical performance, scholastic ability, and leadership qualities. Bridgette was selected as the national medal recipient and selected for the 2015 High School All Academic Team by the U.S. Cross Organization. Bridgette is president of the Health and Wellness Committee, an AP peer educator, and an active member of Athletes Helping Athletes, as well as the Leadership Council. Bridgette's leadership and compassion is demonstrated through her community service activities with the American Cancer Society, for food drives, community cleanups, tutoring, mentoring, and fundraising. Bridgette states, "Not only has Baldwin High School been the setting that facilitated all my academic successes, more importantly, has been the place in which I have developed relationships with teachers and peers that will last a lifetime. Baldwin High School has allowed me to develop to my full potential with continuous challenges that lead to advancements in my own character." And Bridgette will be attending St. John's University. Our next student, Jackson Randolph. Jackson Randolph is a determined and intelligent young man. His academic accolades include consistent high honor roll and AP scholar with distinction. And he has also competed in the oratory contest, where he has taken second place. Jackson applied his intellect when participating in the rigorous mathletes and academian competitions. As a result of his musical achievements and talents, he was selected to be a member of the Tri-A Music Honor Society. And he has served for them as the treasurer. He was also elected president of the Honors Jamie Roster. Clearly, Jackson's leadership skills have earned him the respect of teachers and peers. Jackson excels in the field. He played junior varsity and varsity football and served as varsity captain, as well as playing JV and varsity lacrosse. His athleticism earned him a National Football Scholar Award. Additionally, Jackson participated in the Future Business Leaders of America, where he was able to truly explore the world of finance. Community service is very important to Jackson, and he is known as a helpful and caring young man. He has worked with younger students through his membership in the Athletes Helping Athletes and Junior Achievement High School Heroes Program. He also taught information on budgeting by working with the Money Smart Program at the Baldwin Public Library. Jackson volunteers at the Vegal Heights Rehabilitation Healthcare Center and is president of the Youth Choir, Sunday School Assistant Secretary, and usher at the Greater Second Baptist Terminal. He cares so much about others that he has shaved his head to raise money for childhood cancer research, raising approximately $13,000, and achieving the title of Knight of the Ball Table. This gifted young man has made his mark at Baldwin High School, and he would like to share this quote with us. Baldwin offers you so many opportunities to succeed. Just being enrolled sets you up for success. Jackson will be attending Temple University. Congratulations. Catherine Sweeney. Catherine Sweeney is one of our most gifted students, who consistently demonstrates her commitment to achievement. Those fortunate enough to encounter Catherine are struck by her compassionate sincerity and desire to succeed. She is committed to learning. She is well-read and knowledgeable about a broad spectrum of topics. Catherine has challenged herself with rigorous courses and still craves more information. Her transcript reflects the impressive amount of honors and advanced studies. Catherine's intense quest for knowledge led her to spend her free time listening to college lectures on the topics that she was learning about in her AP European History class. Catherine's broad spectrum of knowledge and ability to engage in stimulating conversations with peers and teachers speaks to her intellect. Catherine is totally immersed in the school culture. However, she is most passionate about the foreign arts, and she is gifted and highly successful hopeless, with quite a list of awards and accolades. Catherine's elite musical aptitude has been awarded with many selective opportunities. Her musical endeavors include being soprano section leader of the concert choir, and array of outstanding performances in the school musicals, and performances with the Sweet Adlines and octopala groups, as well as working with Baldwin's choir. This multi-talented young woman serves as a special project coordinator and coordinator of social media committee for the robotics team, and finds time to compete with the academians. Catherine organized robot demonstrations and sight visits for our middle and elementary students to inspire them. She tutors her peers and volunteers to help with any school-wide initiatives designed to enhance school culture, positively impact students, and support this community. She is a true lifelong learner who is passionate about all that she undertakes. Although she has so many accolades to be proud of, Catherine remains kind, generous, and humble. She would like to share this quote with us. Baldwin Senior High School has provided you the resources to help you explore and develop my interests. Catherine will be attending Princeton University. Standing in the class are salutatorian David Zuckerman. Okay, David Zuckerman, the salutatorian, is a true scholar and leader who is recognized for his intelligence, athleticism, musical aptitude, altruism, and talent. David eased through the most challenging schedule of advanced placement and honors level classes. He was named Advanced Placement Scholar with honor, and he was placed on the high honor roll with distinction throughout high school. In sophomore year, David requested that he be placed into an advanced placement computer science course while taking honors Algebra II. The math chairman thought about it and allowed this unconventional placement. When he did so, David proceeded to achieve near-perfect grades. When he did so, David proceeded to achieve near-perfect grades. David worked as a computer science teacher also in an independent study class where he helped design a voice activation app for Android devices. David attended a biotechnology program at SUNY Stony Brook and studied the effects of different wavelengths. He is continuing his computer science studies, and he is working on maintaining a computer cluster. David is the president of the academians and the science Olympiads, the mathletes secretary, and the president of the chess club. David is also a gifted musician. He is the secretary of the Honors Queen Symphony and program manager of the percussionist section. He is the percussionist for the Pinochle staff, lending his talents to many of our productions during his four years. He is also a member of the pep band and a student-run jazz ensemble. As one of the top musicians in Nassau and southern counties, he was chosen to play in Long Island Youth Honor Store. He is also the treasurer of the concert choir and the leader of its base section. David is the president of our school chapter of the Triumph National Music Honor Society. David also played JV and varsity soccer. He's varsity tennis captain, and he's a member of our marksmanship and bowling teams. He was named Scholar Athlete every year, all division, all county, in tennis, and received this dry Braxton Award for marksmanship. David's altruistic efforts to Baldwin High School and his community include working at North Shore LIJ, serving as the president of the AP Year Educators, and participating in the North Shore LIJ Leadership Summit. He is a member of the Leadership Council and our school site-based team. David organized an independent project after Hurricane Sandy devastated our community. He placed donation boxes all throughout Baldwin to collect money to pay for school supplies that he purchased and delivered to the district office of the Bay Free Distributor. David is a peer tutor to our students who are having difficulty in academic subjects. Every administrator in this district knows they can rely on him to assist them in any evening events and charity functions. David would like us to hear this quote. "He is grateful that he had the opportunity to participate in various sports, musical groups, and clubs at Baldwin High School. These activities, coupled with the opportunity to take rigorous, quote, rigorous courses, enabled him to succeed and grow. In addition, he is thankful for the dedicated teachers who have encouraged him to learn for the sake of learning and to always set high goals for himself." David will be attending Yale University. Our salutatorian, number one in the class. The members of our salutatorian, the top of the class, is respected by his peers and his teachers for his intellect, aptitude, and pursuit of knowledge. His tenth-grade math teacher believed in him and felt that he was so bright that he could teach Algebra II or Trigonometry I. That same year, Kayhan set out with Kirk, set out to take this course, and he sat in a class, Baldwin Seniors, and took this advanced placement Calculus BC exam. He had not completed the course, but just took the exam and easily scored a five. His next person was right to believe in him. He has also, this is amazing, received a score of five on all eight advanced placement exams that he's taken. Incredibly, he still has five more to go, so hopefully he'll find a five. This makes him not only an AP Scholar, but a national AP Scholar. Kayhan has taken the most rigorous courses, obviously, and he has always done extremely well. His hard work and dedication is why he is here today in the number one spot. He excels in all areas, but he is most passionate about math and science. Kayhan was named Long Island Young Scholar of Mathematics and was accepted by the Institute of Creative Problem Solving for gifted and talented students at SUNY Ole Westbury to pursue mathematical and science applications. He was one of seventy-nine students selected by the institute out of approximately seven hundred athletes. He competed in the American Mathematics Competition, a prestigious national contest, and achieved a score in the top one percent of the country. This awarded him entry into the American Invitation Math Exam, which is a qualifier for the International Math Olympiads. He offers variety of practical activities. He's an active member of the mathletes, the science Olympiads, and the academians, serving as the vice president of the mathletes. He is part of an all-star math team where he participated in competitions in various states. He is also a member of the robotics team, and he has put in many summer hours to prepare for the season's competitions. While most of his focus is on academics, he is also a talented musician and a member of the Honors Orchestra where he plays the violin. To give back to the community, he has volunteered to target two different senior citizen centers, helping to arrange and plan activities and field trips. He felt this was a rewarding experience and enjoyed spending time with the seniors. It is no surprise they say he has plans to pursue math and computer science in college, and it will be no surprise that he will be a very successful individual, a scholar, a gentleman, and an asset to our school and community. Kayhan wanted me to share this quote about his Baldwin High School experiences. "Baldwin High School has provided me with an environment conducive to self-study and independent work." He will be attending University of California, Berkeley. And now I have the honor of introducing Baldwin's AP Scholars. These students have completed three or more AP exams with grades of three or higher. I will ask these students to take a place right here and to remain until everyone is called up. They'll be members of friends and people who can stand their places if you recognize as well. I ask a few further questions to all the names that have been present. Ready? I'll begin now. DuMbe, Adam Etao, Matthew Vandell, Jeanette Blanchard, Adrian Roberts. Ariana Chance, Ashley Clark, Kai Costa, Sidney Delmore, Trevor. Sage Horton. Olusadee Wee, Marakulise. Jonathan Martin, Timothy Langdon, Brandon Lee, Chilean Mark Jesus Schmidt, Jacob Houston, Elizabeth Van Vallee, Lelezi St. Louis, Benya Shaimic, Nicole Chantel, Justin McConville, Askita Bunz, Holden Briggs. Now, if you could give this super round. And now I have the honor of introducing Baldwin's AP Scholars with honors. That means that these students have earned an average grade of at least three point two five on all AP exams taken, and who has been applied for more of these exams. Again, please hold your applause until I finish reading their names. Nicholas Ford, Agarwal Berstein, Kenneth Kleinhart, Gabriela Klinkler, Jeremy Myersen, Rebecca Sikari, Hunter Smith, Safer Zadju Bean, Kayla Wallace, David Zuckerman. And now I have the honor of introducing Baldwin's AP Scholars with distinction. This means they are students who have earned an average grade of at least three point two five on all AP exams taken, and grades of three or more or higher on five or four of these exams. Again, hold your applause, please. Henry Chen, Bridgette Jules, Alex Malapeno, Jackson Randall, Amelia Smith, Catherine Sweeney, Kayhan Bickel. And now I have the honor of introducing Baldwin's AP Scholars with distinction. This means they are students who have earned an average grade of at least three point two five on all AP exams taken, and grades of three or more or higher on five or four of these exams. Again, hold your applause, please. Henry Chen, Bridgette Jules, Alex Malapeno, Jackson Randall, Amelia Smith, Catherine Sweeney, Kayhan Bickel.
What do you think? Thank you for the opportunity to present this one of the students. I'm going to start with Jennifer O'Nai. She's been recognized as the Arts Supervisors Association Scholarship Award winner in Scholastic School Key and Art Portfolio. Jennifer's a very